Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the Blackhawk County Supervisor's Regular Session for May 13, 2025. Roll call, please. Mr. James.
Grant? Kurt Bob? Here. Schwartz? Here. Paul? Layland?
Here. Everyone, please join us for a moment of silence as we reflect on our actions here today. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one is the agenda received as proposed or amended.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose sign. This is received. Item two is public comments. Is there anyone today in the room or online that would like to speak on something that is not on today's agenda? Doesn't look like that. We'll move on to item three, claims and payments. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue payments against the various settlement of such claims as allowed.
So moved. Second.
Mr. James.
Okay. As you know, Michelle's not here. We have a very large claims payment today. The amount is $2,223,259.23. Two, comma, 223, comma, 259, point 23. And the reason that it's larger than normal is a large number of capital projects we're making payments on. That includes about $560,000 in Peters Construction for the courthouse and VA remodeling projects, $232,000 to Peters for the Health Department project, $197,000 for Securedice for the jail security project, about $430,000 for Cedar Valley Nature Trail construction, and $28,000 for repairs to La Porte City Road Shop. Hope there was any others on there that you didn't mention. Of that amount, the 60-40 fund for the sheriff, it was $2,870.74. If you have any questions about these, we could wait for Michelle, but...
There are few mentioned questions. I had to answer.
Yeah, my question's answered yesterday, so I'm good.
All right. We'll move on then. This is our resolution. Do you like a roll call vote, please?
Kurt Bob?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Item four, receive project updates from department heads and department officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, Engineer. Roads are in good condition. We have started our warm weather maintenance activities, mowing the hard surface roads started yesterday or earlier this week. We are spraying weeds, of course. And then work is also reserved by PCI on our Brandon Road Ditch Project that's east of La Porte on Brandon Road. We are reconstructing the ditch on the north side of Brandon Road, east of La Porte City. They got started earlier this winter, but then they had to shut down for some months. They are now back out there working. And then work also started yesterday on our Tama Road Resurfacing Project that is between Dizer Road and La Porte, La Porte City Limits. So the cold and place recycle process that started yesterday, that will be going on for a few days, and then they will be probably, most likely getting started on the resurfacing, the actual asphalt resurfacing, probably next week, weather permitting. So that road is open to through traffic, school buses, et cetera, but closed to the general public if they don't need to go that way. Can I answer any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning. Amanda Fesenmeyer, HR Director. Just a couple things this week. So Friday, we have a workshop opportunity for staff. About 50 staff members signed up for this. It's positive conversations and not-so-positive situations. I'm learning how to turn workplace conflict into collaboration and understanding. So the first session is May 16, 10 a.m. noon. We're using the Banji Miller Adult Learning Center with all the facilities being used at the courthouse for the remodel. We tend to try to have a setting outside of the workplace for staff to go and just have a two-hour session dedicated to professional development. The second, actually, there's a second day where there's two additional sessions, June 12th, so you'll see reminders on that as well. Open enrollment is going well. We're about halfway through the month for May for open enrollment. We have about half of our staff that have accessed the EAS link, completed their open enrollment, and about half have not completed that at this time or not started it. So you'll still see reminders if you haven't done your open enrollment for department heads to remind their staff to get that done. We send reminders out to those that haven't started or haven't completed every Wednesday of the month, or of the month of May. So any questions on open enrollment or training this month? All right. Thank you.
Is there anyone in line that would like to provide an update? No more. We'll move on to the consent, or to the minutes, I'm sorry. Minutes approved for May 6, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Consent agenda. Following items will be acted upon by a single resolution without discussion unless someone wishes to remain waiting for discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Kurt Bob?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Item seven, contracts and agreements. This is a resolution with the addendum to the Pharmacy Management Services Agreement between Blackhawk County and Navitas Health Solutions effective July 1, 2025 with a three-year fixed administration fee schedule. Fiscal year '26, $2.88. Fiscal year '27, $2.97. Fiscal year '28, $3.06. And that was a per-member, per-month, be approved. And direct the chair to sign for same as recommended by Amanda Fesenmeyer, Human Resources Director, and Stacy Wandersheid, Benefits Consultant.
So moved.
Moved and seconded.
Okay. So I'll be up here for a while. This is our renewal time for the benefits provided to Blackhawk County employees. Our benefit consultant, Stacy Wandersheid, is on the meeting here today, virtually. Stacy, would you like to introduce yourself?
Yes. Stacy Wandersheid with Cottingham and Butler out of Des Moines, Iowa.
All right. So Stacy and her team, they assist us through the renewal process. Here today, you're going to hear about the prescription drug plan, the dental plan, the vision plan, and the flexible spending account. So what you have here is the agreement, the three-year agreement for fixed administration fees for the prescription drug plan through Navitas. This is our third renewal with Navitas for the county's prescription drug plan. It did begin in July 1 of 2019. This is the first increase we've had in the administration fees. Previously, they were $2.75 per member, per month. And then you have the new fees that Supervisor Layland just listed off.
Do we have a...
Yeah, you'll re...
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Stacy.
Okay. I was just going to say that, yeah, as part of our agreement with Navitas, remember, Navitas is a pharmacy benefit administrator, so they just charge an admin fee. They don't get into the business of charging spread or additional off of every prescription that comes through. So we, so that admin fee is all that they collect. Most traditional PBMs will also get a portion of the costs of the drugs and so forth as they go through. All rebates, then, are, of course, passed along to the county as well. So we've looked at their experience over time, and the county has much more competitive cost on the pharmacy side than what we see with our other public entity clients. And I think a lot of that is attributable to Navitas and this PBA arrangement that we have.
Do you want to ask a question?
So my question has to do with, do we have an option for mail order and reduce costs for the prescriptions as well?
Yes, there's a mail order component, and then we're also managing specialty drugs, which specialty drugs are really the largest driver of pharmacy expenses today. Those are the drugs that you see advertised on television oftentimes, you know, those types of drugs that help for chronic conditions like MS or you see those golfers, arthritis drugs, and some of those expensive specialty medications. It's being managed separately through a partnership that Navitas has so that, you know, costs can be contained on that aspect, which is really the big driver.
I believe our mail order, I was thinking it was like 90 days supply or something that effect, but we've had the mail order in place for many years.
Long, long time. Yeah. And mail order doesn't save as much as it used to, money as that goes. You know, it's a changing landscape. So it used to be that you could, you know, get it through mail order, and the employee would save money, and the employer would save money. Some of those drugs that are through mail order now are less expensive to get through actual pharmacy sometimes. So Navitas does a good job of steering people in the right direction so that the county is enjoying the lowest cost alternative.
Navitas also assists with notifying us and Stacy's team as well as when there's opportunities. We just signed that statement of work, I believe, maybe last week or two weeks ago for the class action lawsuits. So those are kind of example, another example of what this program does. In addition to then administering all of the pharmacy plans and costs and aligning that with the medical plan for employees deductibles and out-of-pocket tax. Other questions on this particular agreement?
This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Kurt Bob?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Item E, resolution that the base plan renewal agreement between Blackhawk County and Delta Dental, the dental plan administration effective July 1, 2025, with a three-year fixed administration fee schedule. Fiscal year '26, $5.32. Fiscal year '27, $5.42. And fiscal year '28, $5.52, and that is per employee, per month. For the single base option and family base option be approved, and the chair directed to sign the financial exhibit as recommended by Amanda Fesenmeyer, Human Resources Director, and Stacy Wandersheid, Benefits Consultant.
So moved.
Second.
So our dental plan, we did make some adjustments this year just to make them more in line with the current dental practices. So one item listed was the white composite filling. Some of our plans still have some language that allowed for required against civil, or silver composite filling. But Stacy's team was able to do a quick kind of refresh on the dental plan and provide something that's more in line with the market today. So we tend to look at these and like vision every once in a while, whether that's based on experience or feedback or based on the expertise from Stacy's team as to we need to make modification. And that is the modification that's presented here with this free fixed-year administration fee plan for the dental plan. The second action is the buy-up plan. So they're identical. The base plan is what employees receive if they take medical insurance, there's no additional costs. The buy-up plan is more for if, you know, you have a condition or you know you need braces, for example, for children, things like that, where you would include a selection for a buy-up plan. But the fees for them, for both plans, aren't the same. Stacy, do you have anything to add to this?
Yeah. Delta Dental's done this kind of three-year schedule for many years now where they publish kind of what the fees are going to be as you move forward. You know, they don't tie you in where you're locked in, but, you know, they just pre-publish them. When they first came out with this, with this approach, some of our clients didn't do the three years. They would just say, oh, well, we'll just renew one year at a time and so forth. And I would pull their original proposal with the three-year, with the three-year pricing strategy, and it would be the same thing. So it's just really kind of like they're opening, you know, the curtain, I guess, so you can see behind and know what the, what the rates are going to be that they're going to charge those next years anyhow.
Amanda?
Delta Dental, oh. Delta Dental is an administrator, so, you know, it's a self-funded plan with the county.
So the question is, do we, this is not an package plan, or are we doing RFP through Delta Dental or anything like that?
No. So if we were interested in looking at dental options, we would include Delta Dental, but we would look at other options as well in the marketplace.
Okay.
Yep.
So this is more just going back to Delta Dental and saying, you know, our plan needs to be modified and more in line with like the, what, you know, regular practices are. Sometimes there's just little tweaks that happen over time that we make adjustments to, but it's not like a full-blown RFP. That's, we'll get to that. That was what we did with the vision plan, though.
Okay.
But we do have that opportunity with Stacy's team, and they have an agreement. We can request, and they will pull that information, they will get quotes if we ever feel like, you know, let's kind of check what the market looks like for outside of Delta Dental or any of them for that, with the benefits. And we could certainly do that with Stacy's assistance and her team.
Given that you're self-funded, you know, your dental claims are your dental claims. So, you know, really what we're comparing against is network, both for availability for employees to have a good selection of dentists, but then also what that reimbursement rate is or that discount rate. And then it's just their admin fees. So it's not a fully insured, there's not a, you know, a fully insured kind of a pool rating. It's really based on your experience.
Any other questions? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Kurt Bob?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Item C, resolution that the buy-up plan renewal agreement between Blackhawk County and Delta Dental for dental plan administration effective July 1, 2023, with a three-year fixed administration fee schedule. Fiscal year '26, $5.32. Fiscal year '27, $5.42. Fiscal year '28, $5.52 per employee, per month. With a single buy-up option and to family buy-up option be approved, and the chair directed to sign the financial exhibit as recommended by Amanda Fesenmeyer, Human Resources Director.
So moved.
Second.
Stacy, no, this one?
I forgot that one.
No, that's all right.
I must have looked her up.
It's just you. That's all right.
We recommended by.
Yeah.
But, yeah, this is the same, I mean, same fees. It's just for the, we have two dental plans, and one's a base plan and one's a buy-up plan.
Amanda, do you have a percentage? How many are on the base plan, how many are using the buy-up? Is it half-half?
I don't know. I think we've been hand...
It's, it's, let's see. There's 40 singles on the buy-up and 87 family on the buy-up. And on the base plan, there's 69 singles and 157 families.
Interesting. Okay.
Yeah. Most do the base. Yeah. Unless, and so we encourage that, you know, if you know you have something that's coming up, it's tough sometimes, like you could have an access or something, but you have things like where you're going every year, not above and beyond your, like, regular six-month appointment, then, you know, you may want to do the buy-up plan. But it's a, and some just do it because, just in case, you never know when you run into something that you want to have those additional dollars for. But, yeah.
With that kind of participation in both plans, that kind of tells us that it's, you know, that there are options out there for everybody. So as Amanda was explaining, that, you know, when people have children that are going into braces and so forth, they'll maybe switch over to the buy-up plan. So, you know, I think that's something that we're going to take a look at in the future, but for now, it's not lopsided, so people are making choices as they need.
Any questions? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Kurt Bob?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Item D, resolution that the renewal agreement between Blackhawk County and Avesis, as the county's voluntary vision plan provider, effective July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2027, with no rate increase be approved, and direct the chair to sign for same as recommended by Amanda Fesenmeyer, Human Resources Director, and Stacy Wandersheid, Benefits Consultant.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. So this is a voluntary plan. This is not funded out of a self-insured fund. There is nothing that the employer pays for vision at this time. And this was a situation where we did request the benefit consultant team to do kind of a refresh in the RFP to get some bids. And we are recommending to continue with Avesis. And Stacy, I'll let you kind of give some information on the RFP process, but they did hold their pricing for, which again, since we don't, as the employer, pay for any of this, we felt pricing is an important factor. And then they did enhance some of the benefits with copays and things like that. But Stacy, would you like to give a brief overview of that RFP process?
Yes. So currently, there are 250 employees of the county that participate or elect to pay for the vision coverage. There's 81 single and 169 families participating. Avesis is the incumbent. We decided to renew with them. When we sent out to the market, though, we included, Delta Dental has a vision plan. They partner with IMED. We also looked at Emeritus, which has kind of a dual-network approach where they have VSP, so an employee could choose the VSP network or they could choose the IMED network. And then MetLife was another one that we looked at as well. Most competitive for the, for what we were looking at was to stay with Avesis and have some enhancements they provided. I think knowing that it was out to the market and so forth, we were after really looking at maybe increasing some of the benefit or enhancing it, just kind of bringing it in line with the market. There had been some questions about, you know, frames maybe more frequent than every 24 months, but as this process kind of proved out for us, 24 months is really what all of them quoted. So, and, you know, we think maybe there's an education opportunity where people, if they want lower-cost frames, I mean, for instance, the frames I'm wearing right now, I ordered off of Amazon for $16. They're just blue light glasses, and then I went and had my lenses put in through my vision plan. So there's some, some educational opportunities there if people are looking for ways to save money. But they did have some popular, or some, some lens enhancements that are popular for, like, progressive lenses and tints and scratch resistance and so forth. So some enhanced benefits there. So I think overall, it was a good process to, to look at options this year, and it certainly gave us some food for thought for in the future when, when we're interested in looking at change.
So resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Kurt Bob?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Item E, resolution to approve the amendment from Employee Benefit Corporation, Madison, Wisconsin, for Flex Spending Account Administration Services for Blackhawk County effective July 1, 2025, with an annual renewal fee of $450 and a monthly administration fee of $3.60 as recommended by Amanda Fesenmeyer, Human Resources Director, Stacy Wandersheid.
So moved.
Second.
All right. So EBC, they are the administrator for both the Flexible Spending Account and our Cobra program. And so this is just for the Flexible Spending Account. Currently, the fee is $3.57, so it's gone up $0.03 to $3.60. But again, this is basically for employees to elect to reduce their, I guess, taxable income and use those pre-tax dollars for what often they say post-tax medical expenses. So the limits are included each year in open enrollment as to how much you can elect. The county does not provide any kind of match or any kind of support for that. So this is just employees electing to deduct from their paycheck for the medical expenses or for dependent care expenses under the IRS guidelines.
Was there any increases to the...
Yeah. It went from $3.57 for that monthly administration fee to $3.60 is what I believe that main increase was. Stacy, does that sound correct?
Yeah.
That's what I...
Yeah, that's right.
That's per Flexible Spending Account?
I believe it is per Flexible Spending Account, because a minimum was a $60 monthly fee based on enrollment, yes. It would be.
Yeah. Yeah. And when we look at Flexible Spending Account administrators, I mean, there's not a lot of difference necessarily in price, but, you know, you really want to have good service. So when people are putting their money out of their paycheck into the account and then want to file for reimbursement, you know, you want the process to be smooth and for people to be able to, to get their money out when they have the appropriate claim and documentation and so forth. So this is one of those benefits that, you know, if it isn't broken, we don't typically try and fix it or make moves unless there's a service issue or pricing is out of whack. So having heard no, you know, static from employees on this, this isn't something that, you know, you would market, you know, very frequently unless there was, you know, a service issue or, like I said, pricing starts to get out of line.
And I think we did have one, and since it's probably been at least 10 years ago, close to that, where we did have a previous administrator, that we did have a lot of complaints from employees about the process. And then that's how we came to come with EBC. And since then, it...
Yeah.
Yeah. So. Any questions on that?
This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Kurt Bob?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Item F, resolution that the contract amendment between Blackhawk County and Iowa Judicial Branch Juvenile Court Services, First Judicial District, for the purpose of enabling the county to continue to provide fiscal agent services for intensive community support funds, effective from July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026, be approved, and the chair to sign.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? I was going to say he was here and did that.
Yeah. I'll just let you know, I did, I will, and all the way back, look at the contract. And my alarming thing that I found in all this is the county takes on a huge amount of liability when we're doing this, and there is not a single one of those dollars sticking to the walls when we're assuming all that liability. So next time, we need to do a contract with them, somehow, I don't know how it can be done, but somehow, the county should be receiving something for all the liability. It's just, it's amazing that, that legal contract is just blaring. The county's getting all this responsibility, not getting paid a single penny for it.
This has come up in review in the past. The state kind of has a, we have to provide them with space, and we don't get a lot of wiggle on those kind of terms, and that has been a problem in the past. I'm not saying that we don't try, push it back again sometime, but I know it's come up in the past, and we've, every time, just kind of don't know. This is what we've always done, and I realize this is what we've always done. It's not a, not a nice way of looking at things. The state has contracting power when it comes to this statutorily required building space, that we, that we are kind of stuck. I don't know if that way to put it.
Some of those unmandated services that... Michelle, perfect.
I just happened to be able to come in for a few minutes. Michelle, we, your finance director, and I also wanted to mention that when I started working here, I do require them to verify and approve all the payments that we make for other juveniles that are in facilities, because I don't have, we don't have, we aren't notified of that directly. At first, they wanted us to, like, go on Courts Online and find the cases and... at first, they wanted us to like go on Courts Online and find the cases and do all that, which I didn't think was a really very efficient way to handle that process, so they have been very gracious to approve, you know, they do that work, they match them up, they know that the juvenile has been placed at North Iowa or wherever, and so I feel much more confident that the county is only paying for our juveniles that are our responsibility and that have been approved to be placed in facilities, so I feel like it's a bit of a two-way street, I think, on the partnership between us.
And that's a really good point, actually, because we have increased pushback just in the last two years, remember?
Yeah.
Some of it was with Michelle, some of it was with Tom Little, this concern has been raised a couple of times, whether we're getting, they're going to the facility that is the, you know, is one that we have to cover first of all, is the best thing for us, secondly, and so, yeah, there has been an increased amount of pushback on that, not that this does nothing to solve the potential problem that we've got liability in this area.
I think that's what Terrence, when he joined us on Zoom, he was trying to say they're doing as much as they can, both sides, for the community and for the juveniles and the families and stuff, but, yeah, he was kind of caught in the middle of this too, but I do remember when you first started, this was one of the areas that you started digging into, we didn't want to balance the, who we were having to serve. I would get bills, but I'd be told just to pay, and I'm like, Ian, I can't do it, I need to know that it's really my responsibility to pay, so we have spent a lot of time, I guess, creating a system that provides us, we hope, with a lot more confidence that we're only paying the things we should pay. And it took some time, I know, to track down those individuals, because everybody was, you know, thought it was somebody else and stuff, and so I had to do some detective work.
I'll just say, that's the most 16th century law language I've ever read in that contract, very scary.
We can try it again, is it, was it a three-year contract, or was it just the one? I was just gonna say.
This is, this is approving, I think, the second extension in the five-year agreement, so there's three more years to go, I believe, before we really negotiate the original contract.
With all the things going on at the stake, who knows? Things will come up, yeah. Thank you.
Tim was able to get through the payables really well, so, but thank you for joining. Super, this is a resolution, if there are no further questions, please answer your names, call.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Kurtenbach?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Item eight, other business, resolution to accept the McFarland Park Septic System Replacement Project, as substantially complete, and authorizes the payment of the contract balance of $5,000 to be paid to Sedanka Excavating and Habitat LLC, utilizing the American Rescue Plan Funds, the same has been approved by the Conservation Board and recommended for approval by the Board of Supervisors.
So moved.
Second.
Just checking if there's anyone online that want to speak, but any questions I guess we could ask. Oh, it looks like Conservation, no?
This asprakes to completion.
Yeah, but that's what it was. And it was already approved by the board and accepted, so if that recommendation's good, this is a resolution, please answer your names, call.
Kurtenbach?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Item B, resolution to direct the advertisement of the sale of $5 million general obligation capital loan notes, Series 2025, and approve electronic bidding procedures and the official statement, as recommended by Michelle Weidner, Finance Director.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I can't believe I'm able to be here for this, but I'm glad, Michelle Weidner, Finance Director, so this document is what is actually circulated to the bidders that we hope will bid on our debt with very favorable interest rates, so it's important that the information will be accurate, and it's worth, it's worth a read, there is some boilerplate you probably can skim, but there is good information about the county and our financial position included. Any other questions about that? No, I think you said a statement out last night, or an email kind of language that you were writing at the end of it.
Yes, I've still been seriously working on it, but yeah, we're getting there.
So it's from, ready to go. Any questions from Michelle?
This is a resolution, please answer your names, call.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Kurtenbach?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Item nine, discussion, to commit funds to the City of Waterloo for a joint evidence processing and storage facility.
Okay, you've got comments, hey, Susan?
Nate, do you like me to outline what the city says, at least, I just.
Yeah, if you would, Mike, I know at this point, I think we've kind of covered the building pretty in-depthly, and I think we're, it's almost, almost more of a negotiation at this point, working on the 2080 agreement, seeing where we fall on that, and I'll kind of let Mike's go and work with Marty on that, so.
And, and just, so, for a P, you know, obviously the board made sure, I communicated to the city that nothing's approved by the county until it's approved by the board, and likewise, nothing that Marty communicates is necessarily binding counteroffer anything that the city's behalf either, but recall that, oh, roughly a week ago, a week and a half, we sent the city a different, you know, several different terms for that 2080, so that if, in fact, this project was approved, for example, we wanted some protections in case the city were gonna get out of it within 15 years, we talked about a 50-year term, we changed the money figure to $750,000, the key changes in what Marty has sent to us, and again, this is binding on the city, number one, he thinks, commented on this, this isn't in the 2080 draft that he sent, he commented on this in his email, in his opinion, he doesn't think the, he's not really liking 50-year term, he thinks that 30-year term will be, I don't know why that is necessarily, but probably just because of length, and...
I must say, I spoke with Mayor Part, two or three weeks ago on this, and he seemed amenable to the 50-year, so I don't know. Yeah, I don't know. They've spoken, or that change there.
Marty's advice is the contrary, what, but I would be curious where the city's stance is on this, now, there's been talk on and off, and I realize this has never been counterproposed by our board together or anything like that, there's been talk about periodic payments, I personally have heard talk about making payments over, pretty big payments, and that would be it, or talk about a payment over years of so many thousand a year, but I, not trying to say that the board has ever been on the same page about that, but what Marty has proposed, he did not propose an annual payment, he has proposed gradually increasing a series of 20 annual payments, in years one through five, it would be $10,000, in years six through 10, $12,000, in years 11 through 15, $14,000, in years 16 through 20, $16,000, and those add up to $260,000 payments over a period of 20 years, he made insurance provisions reciprocal, which is fine, that's typical, and then I would just comment that we haven't yet put a, put together a shared use agreement, but Nate and I have communicated on this, and I believe Nate, you said you communicated with Waterloo PD on this as well, right?
Yes.
At least, you know, in conversation, and what Nate outlined in the email to me was, that he also sent all of you, was really, you know, kind of what I personally had envisioned in this regard, which is that the agreement would be, you know, we would have our own storage space, and that could be identified in the agreement by use of the spectrum that has been provided so far, so we would have that, and that product's been provided to the board as well, then, there would be 24-hour access any day of the week, any day of the year, and that would include, and I'm reading this now from Nate's email, the Vehicle Processing Lab, the County Storage Area, the drying rooms, the General Lab, the Moon Room, the Decontamination Room, Brake Room, and the Rest Rooms, and that Sheriff's Office policy, you know, they would have policies to how their employees handle those facilities, but I imagine that goes with your general facilities policy, now, there is this question, and this is where, really the only answer is we've got to work cooperative between the departments, is what happens if we need the same thing at the same time, and that would be a situation where our officers would speak with their officers, and they determine how that can be worked out, and I don't, you know, I don't see a situation where you can ever write a policy and say, well, City Waterloo always has priority, Blackhawk County always has priority, I think what happens is the officers get together and exercise professional judgment as to what the, what's more urgent, if it really comes down to minutes and seconds in those services, so I think that this, this actually really gives us a good structure for how this agreement will come together, and predict that will come together very soon, and at least in a form that our board could propose to them, so if we are voting in the next week or two on this, on this, on a 2080, to, you know, approve for them, I think that we could also propose at that same time, a shared use agreement that they would find agreeable, that we could run by the Waterloo PD, so, those are the things I wanted to mention that have been updated since the last time we spoke, beyond what you've seen in the email correspondence concerning the last 2080 draft that we settled with the city.
Can you recap again the term that's in the, this draft?
What's that?
Can you recap again the term length?
Well, he said in his email that he thinks a 30-year term would be better, but he, and then specifically what he said, hold on a second, I'm gonna pull up his email.
But the actual agreement he sent back, the table changes?
No, it didn't have a change, and that's why I made a point of saying, he's, he could well recommend a different term to the city council, for whatever reason he thinks appropriate, he said, I have doubts about 50-year term, I think 30-years is more appropriate, he left it in, but expressed that as he meant to, and that's not binding on the city, nor is this, nor is this draft that he had, theirs is all subject to the council, which is just like ours is subject to our.
Well, I agree with him in one area, so I have doubts with it as well, but I was gonna say, we're talking about the 2080 lease agreement and this shared use agreement, and the lease agreement, I guess, I know Nate, you proposed that when we talked about, and so, and I appreciate the fact that you were looking in your budget because nothing had come forward, you know, we talked about, and I don't mean to revisit that again, but the five-year plan, or having any discussions in budget, so I appreciate that you looked to that, and you talked about the 50-year, and the more I thought about it, I mean, it seemed like a large number of years to go out there, I didn't think the city would probably appreciate that number in the first place, but I know I, when I thought about something that we'd be able to do, the $10,000, we talked about not using reserves if we didn't have to or couldn't, so I thought, when I looked at 50-years and $10,000 a year, that did put us at $500,000, and so I was a little more receptive to that at the time, and thought, well, that could be doable, but I asked Michelle the question, and she said, that would mean we'd have to carry the debt for 50-years?
Yeah. When we spoke with Michelle on it, she said, if we term it as a lease, then yes, and if we turn it, term it as an operating expense, then no, and if you recall, when I talked about our, our range facility out there, we're spending about $10,000 a year between water, power, alarms, everything out there, so I think it's fair to say that we're gonna put $10,000, and then every five-years that goes up, those operating expenses are gonna go up, so I would say if we can term that as though we're helping offset the operating costs of the evidence building, then you're, you're still operating under that umbrella of operating costs instead of the lease term.
Well, I'm still struggling with the fact that we're only having 10% of the building, we have to, I know you're talking, I don't mean that we're not using it, and you can't use 40% of it, that lab and the processing part of it, I do, but I said there were statements made early on that if we didn't partner on this, that they'd only, they'd reduce the size to 8,000 to 10,000, I doubt that's what they had in mind, but even if that was, if they were reducing out that, that would explain how much we would be using, obviously.
But we're using roughly 40% of that building, and the most expensive part of that building is the lab, I mean.
Oh, I agree, I agree with you.
We can't move our own, or even remotely close to this, I think, we can't look at this as if what goes away from Waterloo, it's what are we benefiting?
Oh, it is.
What are we getting from this?
I'm not arguing with you on that, I truly believe that.
We can't touch this for this, this amount of money on our own.
I, I truly agree that that, it's having that for us to use is a real benefit, we've got the storage places all over, as do they, but I said, it's utilizing that lab and the processing that's the real benefit for us, the volume, you know, there's never been actually any cost presented that have said what we're saving by doing this, there's never been any volume of cases, but I know from Sheriff's discussions earlier, he talked, you know, about probably 5% to 10% would be county versus what we'd overall use it, and so you still look at 40% of the building, even if we were joint owner, owners of it, and that we are only using it 10% of the time, max, that's where I come to the usage of the building, but is it a benefit for us and the residents and everything that you've talked about, being structurally sound, a better secured building, updated technology, the equipment that they're bringing to this, the expertise?
And it's just something that our insurance companies told us we need.
Well, they told us that after we called them in, they were called.
But they still, yes.
Do I know that we don't have running water there, we've known that for 20 or 30 years, or whatever, we've had.
But the point is, once they pointed out, we're obligated to abide by that.
We, well, we were, we had to close it, and we did, but then we got the services elsewhere.
So it's like, once, once something's been brought to our attention, we have to work with it, and that's.
We are working with it, you said we closed it down, we stopped doing the cases then, had to get them done elsewhere, and those were some of the questions that were asked about, what has that cost us to do that?
And I discussed that numerous times.
You said you'd go back and have to look at numbers, but we've still never seen numbers, so I'm just saying.
I did a whole PowerPoint with you, Linda, on.
On one a day.
On that, I couldn't necessarily quantify it, but we talked about the manpower, I had my investigators here discussing the things that they do, you keep coming back to the same things, and I don't have any different answers for it.
I'm not coming back to the same things, I'm just saying, for us partnering with this facility, and to say, assume that we were going to pay a half of the cost and not use it for half of it or whole ownership of it, is a 1.5, we knew was great, way out there, so a 750 plus 500,000 was a 1.2, that's, to me, like I said, we're overextending, what we have to use is our reserves for this facility.
And now we're even more less than that 1.2 now, at 750 plus 260, we're at a million dollars, a million and ten.
Yeah, it's reduced some, that's great, but I see no reason for us, I'm not sure, unfortunately, Michelle can't be here today, but she told us she wouldn't be able to be here, so we'd have to check with her later, on the better options for the county, if it is then using our reserves or using debt or using, or having a lease agreement of a lesser amount, I'm not saying that, it's just time to evaluate the situation and look at some of the things that are out here that we could do, one of the thoughts, and just gonna throw this out here, I prefer everybody down here, I guess, just to say, you know, that facility is gonna be something that we all benefit from, we've talked about whole county, and then probably some of the regional maybe areas.
Absolutely.
Because having that here, so it's a plus, but I said, we have, I know they're talking about putting up a training facility and a range or something at this building, why not a shared facility of offering our range and training center in exchange for use of the lab, just something to think about again, negotiating types of things, and save the taxpayers the money, it's not looking at really what benefits us or benefits the city so much as working together in a partnership for the county residents or the taxpayers, just a thought, that I'd like to explore that with them, they may not be open to it, you may not be open to it, but it's examining things like that, that we really are sharing and working together to overall save tax dollars and get the benefit that you as your deputies need and that they as policemen need as well, so, just something like that, and possibilities, and that's why when we talked earlier, it was about, you know, we said the devil's in the details, it's like, it's easy just to say this is a great facility and we need it, but it's working through it, the 2080 agreement, the lease agreement, which, like I said, I didn't see that in addition to cash, but if there's a way to reduce the cash, that we'd have to do by using it, and it serves the purpose of the county, I'm open to those suggestions, it's just we have, this is where we start, the either or, and what about this, and what about that, and other solutions, and looking at things that. and looking at things that it just is a little more difficult than just the cash.
And and just so everybody's kind of clear on some what some of these terms are, when we talk about lease agreement, I think what you mean um is that there's an agreement that we, Michelle wants to have as a separate.
Yeah.
This for this annual payment that's gonna be under there. There are technical accounting reasons for that. But essentially, we take what was in this draft and put it into a separate short agreement that would be done pertinent to this. Uh that wouldn't, I I don't know that it would be characterized as a lease with rent. I think it would be more as a shared operating expenses kind of agreement, however it's characterized.
I think lease was just the term to get a separate from 2080 and so we just called it lease.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure everybody was clear on that.
So we're not paying half. We're paying a portion. And Nate, you have investigators who are pretty much full-time doing investigation.
Oh, absolutely.
So they'll probably be there majority of the time other than.
Yes.
So there's that part. Uh question I have on this updated uh version we have is there was a change on the commercial general liability where it's both parties. So now does that show that we have more responsibility and ownership of the building by being tied in with that liability insurance?
Yeah, it it is typical that our insurance would cover anywhere where we are housing our employees or storing our our equipment, in this case, evidence as well, uh on a regular basis. So that's not uncommon where if you have leased premises or you don't use premises that belong to somebody else, that you would cover your annual liability over there and that's what's is more.
So I I don't have a problem with that, knowing that now that's shown that we have, that's another sign we have interest in that building.
Yep.
Okay. So that part is covered. The issue with the maintenance and its maintenance fee, not a lease, the way it's written, is that what we were talking about?
Either maintenance fee, operating costs, however it gets eventually.
But not a lease.
Not a lease, because as a lease, from what I understand from Michelle, that would have to count as carrying that. Whereas if we term it, let's say there are maintenance fees, operating costs, however you do that, that's the 10, 10, 10, 12, 12. That's those numbers.
And you're good with that, Mike?
Yep, I understand as well. And so that that was why I made the statement about the lease terminology.
Okay. So I only have one other issue with that and I shared that with Mike earlier. We'll get back with Nate on that and see if there's any other changes.
Um one of the questions, I guess, to the 2080, we had asked that they disclose the funding? So they had no questions with some of the things that we had in it originally, specifically?
I don't think they, he didn't remove it from there and he didn't comment.
He didn't comment.
That's all I would say. Yeah.
Shall disclose to each other their funding source. That is something we need to confirm.
It's in there and it's a two-way provision, so.
Sure, both of us, yeah.
Give their pushback on that later. There's only one question to help.
Well, I don't know if you've had any thoughts of Chris. I know early on, you know, you'd mentioned too about not using reserves. It was like we wouldn't use reserves and we talked about bonding and then that turned out to not be a possibility unless we did it differently. Any thoughts or?
Yeah, no, it's um I still remain supportive of us doing this. Like, my hope was be would was that we could bond for it. Um feel like, do you want to protect those reserves for all the unexpected things that keep coming at us from the state? But um I guess, you know, my only kind of thought, just hearing uh over this draft is I'm more comfortable with a longer-term agreement because I just see us, if we're we're having to take from our reserves to spend, you know, three-quarter of a million dollars, we're essentially buying a portion of this building. And I want us guaranteed to have access to that for the lifetime, expected life expectancy of this building, which would be closer to 50 years.
And that was exactly what the what went into calculus in proposing the 50-year term. Um I don't know what the city's going to conclude as to that ultimately, but my my gut feeling is that they're not gonna lose this funding over that provision. That's just my gut feeling. Uh I would say that initially they proposed a million and a half and we'd only have 15 years uh where we would have it guaranteed. I think this is a already we're substantially in the right direction. But I I agree on 50 years personally. I think they agrees on that. And I don't think there's a strong objection to the people we're talking to at the city outside of this this limited comment I've already made. And and I can speak with them certainly on that.
Yeah, with the reserves, because I did think that was one of the, one of the conversations we probably need to start having is about those reserves and what levels we want to be at. Because I know we've talked about some of the, Brian Williams has talked about relocation. We've got Kathy's building. We have several things kind of going on with our building capacity. And I imagine if any of those were to happen this year, that's reserves is the only place it's gonna come from, so.
That's why it's on the strategic plan.
Yeah, but it needs to be sooner than later. I think we just need to maybe move that up because as I said, especially when we've got projects hanging out there, because we're not gonna be able to do them or it's our decision to not. We need to let people know that as well instead of thinking that might happen anytime this year. Whatever if you think that, but yeah, it's unfortunate, but yeah, we could do that. This is just one that's kind of annoying.
Yeah, no, I think that's a one for the county that we could have, you know, some serious work sessions on this summer and come to an agreement on what that level should be.
Because we don't know what this year's gonna entail for us yet, right at this point with the state changes and some of the things that we're seeing. I was, you know, Michelle said something late last night about some changes too and.
Yep.
On the property tax reforms. I don't know, Tim, have you had any updates on that? But I was gonna say that.
Still alive.
Still, yeah.
No changes.
Unfortunately, if the state doesn't move in a different direction in the next couple of years, we've got a bigger problem than three-quarter million dollars of the reserves. I'd say this would impact or help down the road at some point, but we've got a lot bigger problems that will hit us. It'd hit every every local government and state.
Yeah, as I said, to have that there is kind of good for some of those programs. We might have some cuts to these into those grants, like the health grants and conservation and places where we might choose to help fund some of those programs, but.
Just timeline, I think it was next Tuesday, we were supposed to have a final word for Ron to take back to the city, correct?
Yes, that was the original plan. A couple of weeks ago was for having on the agenda for resolution.
I'm gonna ask to change that just because of this last drop and things that we need to talk about with Michelle and Happer report really back to all of us. So I was gonna ask if Waterloo was here, you know, with the group of them, I was gonna ask if they didn't mind if we could, and the board as well. But just to get some of these questions answered, um and make sure we've got everything done and finalized and ready for it. And I won't be here unfortunately and I I apologize. I was gonna say, when you came in, Nate, I did think it was like, being on Zoom is no way to be kind of interacting with people and trying to understand what they're saying and vice versa. So I think doing that on Zoom, it's unfortunate, Tavis had thought he'd be able to call in for today and join and we see what's happened and he's not. And I know Justin had, you know, was abstaining anyway, but he had something come up so that he wasn't able to be here. But I just thought when it's possible and for especially something important like this, it's, I think, important if you if you could relate to them or whatever.
We got Chief Duncan here. I know we're, at some point, we're gonna kick the can down the road too far and they're gonna move forward with the project and we're gonna be left behind.
I don't, I don't mean to do that, but I just thought in all fairness to us, this came to us at the 11th hour anyway. We've only been talking about this and it's been longer than I know you put it on or someone put it on for discussion, possible board action the first week they were here, that we learned about it and I thought we had a lot of homework to do yet. But I'm just asking, I guess, if you could wait another week and that'd be the 27th when we'd all be here.
I won't be out of town next week.
No, the 27th.
27th.
The last.
Or that, I'm sorry, I'll be here, I'd be here next week. The 27th, I'm out of town. We're out of town that, that's holiday week. I'm out of town that week.
Well, I know I asked to delay it then. I'm sorry. I I know you want to be here, but I just meant I I think it's important to the board making decisions. I'd like us all to be here and to talk with each other in different conversations we can have or with Mike or whatever too. But I'd like to hear back from the city, I guess, to proposing a shared use of facilities, just what their thoughts on that and your thoughts on it, but.
I mean, I think they've, they're making plans to move on their training facility. That's, and to me, that's somewhat irrelevant regarding this. This is about the evidence building. They came to us knowing we have a need for it, knowing that they have a need for it. Now that they're moving facilities, I I don't see where the training facility has really any bearing on this agreement and what we're talking about, this 2080 here.
Well, I appreciate that. I'm not sure. I guess I agree with you, but that I I do see some shared possible arrangement could be done too. But that's, yeah, you're right, but this is in front of us right now.
I would, would it be, are you, are you traveling all of next week?
Um, yeah, I was gonna say, it's just one, take, attempt this night, we're just kind of, yeah, messing each other by day.
Yeah. I was just trying to think of, because I do, I mean, I think generally when when there's something that's, there's more disagreement on the board, it is nice that everybody's here and I say, um, I was just trying to figure out if there's a a different date that everybody would be here. Are you traveling all of?
I'm leaving town Memorial Day and I'll be gone that entire week.
Okay.
So is it unusual to have a special session like on a Thursday?
There's nothing that prevents us from doing that.
We can, yeah, if that works. I mean, and if we're ready before, if we can get ready before, that would be fine. If we can get all our questions answered and see where everybody's at with everything.
What what are the big questions that Nate answered for next Tuesday? I mean, we're talking the the term of the agreement and whether we can do the annual payments? We.
Well, we need to find.
From what I understand, that's really the only two things that we're.
Well, that that's easy for you to say, Nate, and that's easy for the people that are going to do this.
I'm trying to understand what we need to clarify.
Well, that I'm happy to let Mike and Michelle get back with you on that and what it is. It's not that I'm asking it from you. We need to know what Michelle's take on is of what we do and what this does to us, what it does to our reserves, what it does to us if it is debt that we've gotta carry. It's those kind of things that we can't answer for ourselves that we need her assistance with. It's Mike working through this agreement and we have to take action then as a board on what we wish to go forward with and then approve it for the city to look at and.
And and just to make it clear from my perspective, because I don't think there's a a lot of legwork or time that I need at this point. I think what we have to clarify is number one, what's the, what's the long-term, the the term contract? Is it 50? Is it 30? Is it something else? Uh number two, do we have an annual payment and if so, in what amount and during what years for how long? Once we get those two items ironed out, uh then the only other big one, and it's not that big in my opinion, is that shared use agreement. So I don't, I just want to be clear that from my end, now I've gotta talk to Michelle about, do we need this alternative agreement or this additional agreement for the uh for the payments? But that can be, that can be put together in fairly short order, just as an agreement that's tied to this one. So it's a fairly short agreement that lays for lays out the payment terms. But I don't, I don't want, I just want to be clear to the board and to show enough that I am not. Um I'm, I don't have anything that's requiring a lot of research or analysis or something like that from my perspective.
I guess for the annual payments, um a lower amount at long, at more years is easier to budget for um trying to fit under these cap limitations that we face every year, but.
More years, lower amounts.
And we could propose that. Any, I mean, we can counter this just because this is his, what he did. He countered with it. He countered as well.
Yep.
Yeah.
I think what, just to kind of remind the board of what my understanding was, is that next week's meeting was going to be a time when we had the 2080, whether it be our version, their version, or something that that was hybridized, that the board is ready to vote on, approve and send to the city and say, hey, city, here's our, here's our 2080. We've signed it. We've approved it. Do you approve it now? And so that was my understanding of where we're at in this process. If anybody's understanding was different, uh let me know.
You mean the 2080 only and not all the other additional things?
It would, it would include the additional items because inherent in that 2080 are the fact that there's gonna be a shared use agreement. I I believe very strongly that that's that's cooperative item between the two departments. Uh but then the uh then the maintenance uh payments agreement or the financing end of it, there'd be an annual payments agreement that you have to have when you do this 2080. I was thinking we would have all the different ones.
And I still think there's possibly to have that by next week.
I do too.
So it'd be Michelle on the finance part?
Yeah. I just, I just want to make sure nobody sees me as either holding it up or pushing in the direction here. I'm just trying very much.
Kind of a lease to the property.
Disinterested uh service provider here.
But we can see, I mean, yeah, I was gonna say, obviously, you're kind of going the direction to if the, if everybody's in agreement on this except me, then we know the votes are there, that there's that. But yeah, I just would prefer to wait and be in person to do it. And um so maybe, maybe in the next few days we find out if the 20th works, if it does or doesn't. And Michelle's got time to work. I know she's tied up all day today, so she's not available, but.
You'll be back in the 22nd if we have a special session for this issue to get forward.
Uh okay, yes, it's the day you and I were gonna meet or something on that.
Yeah.
Something.
Like a rose roll out.
That we knew that too.
So after.
I have, um, I'll have a meeting from 8:30 to 10:30 in the morning, but after that, I'm pretty flexible.
Well, let's, let's, you know, it's hard to do. We had to do it that week before. But I thought, yeah, to check with everybody, but I just meant if we kind of keep the 20th on for the day to, I mean, for now, for the next couple of days, till we have to firm up an agenda and then see, have a chance to touch base with the others as well. See, Michelle was the finance information for us and what Mike, we get to Mike or what we propose or counter propose or want to do.
Yeah, for the final items, I don't think it's gonna take us more than a couple of days. I mean, Marty got back to fairly quickly.
Yep.
So I don't.
Got back fairly quickly and this, at this point, it's uh it's whether they agree to what we send up. That's really what it's gonna boil down to. Uh but the board has to, I mean, and you know this, the board's just gotta gotta agree on what they want, whether they're gonna agree with an annual payment or whether you're gonna agree with an annual payment. If so, what's yours?
And that's the part we definitely need Michelle to weigh in as far as our best options.
Way in is that, I think Michelle's weighing in more just on the mechanics of it, like how we, how we put it, how we document it. But I don't know that, I, I mean, we can ask her if there's, if there's a financial issue. My understanding was it's gonna come out of the shares, but.
Yeah, I totally firmly enough. I will find 10,000, 12,000 years to take it out of my, so I'm not asking for anything extra on that.
No, I know you weren't. I'm not saying I'm not. I was gonna say, I know there's maybe money in your budget this year, maybe we could give advice.
Just the savings, you know, if you're having stuff shipped out to be done, the cost of that, that's already.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna save us. The man hours, the driving back and forth to Ankeny, again, it's hard for me to put a number on that because we don't track every time they go. But there is a lot of man hours, a lot of miles spent taking things to Ankeny, a lot of waiting for turnaround, going back to get things. So I mean, there is gonna be savings just in that operating cost department right there too. So I truly, I wholeheartedly believe in this and I will gladly eat that out of my budget to make this happen.
Well, I don't wanna bounce around all over this because it'd be confusing either, but I said we do, we have to check with at least one other person. I guess Justin, because Justin would be weighing in on it, but as far as in attendance that he wants to be. But to shoot for the 20th and if we don't have a comfort level by this week that will have all that, then we try the 22nd, if that works. Something.
And you'll be around the 22nd, yeah?
Well, I've gotta be gone by like two in the afternoon, so as long as it was something between Chris's reading and mine.
Okay, okay.
And I think I would tentatively think about 11 o'clock for that time based on what Chris mentioned in his schedule.
Okay, does that work?
Yep.
Thank you.
We'll get there.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nate reports your information from the board.
I just uh wanted to wish a bleated Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers, employees, um people all across the county. I just, uh, wanted to wish a bleated Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers, um, employees, um, people all across the county in all forms that motherhood comes in. Um, and so, uh, really appreciate it. I know a lot of mother feels, a lot of mothers feel under attack right now, but are also leading, providing help as well. So I appreciate it and I see it.
Thank you. Anything from you?
Well.
Okay. Take a motion for adjournment.
So what?
Move to the second, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
It is adjourned.